Good evening and welcome to the public hearing of the Livingston Zoning Board of Adjustment. Today is September 25th, 2025. If you're an applicant for a D or U variance, you should be aware that such a variance can only be granted after showing that special reasons for the grant of the variance exists, and that variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the zoning plan of the township of Livingston. You should also be aware that in order to be granted such a variance, you'll require affirmative vote of five members of the seven-member Board of Adjustment. Other variances require a majority of four members to grant that variance. If you're an applicant for any variance and your variance is denied by this board, you have a right to appeal to Superior Court of the State of New Jersey within 45 days of notice of decision, and that court may overturn the decision of this board. If you're an objector to any type of variance that has been granted, you too may appeal to Superior Court of the State of New Jersey within 45 days of notice of decision. If you do file an appeal, I ask that you please provide a copy of your complaint to Planning Administrator Jackie Hollis. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, also known as the Sunshine Law, adequate notice of this meeting was provided to the Star Ledger and the Westchester Tribune, and a copy was also posted on the bulletin board of the municipal building. In addition to having notice posted, notice of this meeting was placed on the township's website. Members of the public will have an opportunity to ask questions or to make statements regarding each application at the appropriate time. When the time comes, if you would like to address the board, please come to the front and use the microphone so we can make sure your comments or questions are part of the record. We will now call the roll. Mr. Kenya?
Okay, Mr. Kenya here, Mr. Horn.
Here.
Mr. Sh- Mr. Shaznay here, Mr. Sherman.
Here.
Ms. Yan.
Here.
Mr. Weisman.
Here.
Ms. Soho.
Here.
Ms. Khan.
Yes, here.
Mr. Beer.
Here.
Leo Coram.
Great. Before we get going, we have three applications that are adjourned through October 28th. There will be no further notice. That is for 20 Cambridge Road, 10 Twin Oak Road, and 24 Cliffside Drive. So if you're here for any of those matters, you can go home, and we'll see you in October. Otherwise, Mr. Kenya, will you call the first application, please?
Absolutely, we'd love to. Block 4009, Lot 1633, Mount Haven Drive. Application number 2025-66-3, Roedak Homes. Applicant seeks approval to construct a new single-family house in violation of the following section: 170-87 BB4 habitable floor area, 30 to 20 square feet allowed, 3519 square feet proposed, 299 square feet variance requested.
Good evening, my name is Matthew Passata. I'm from the law firm Sils, Commiss and Gross. I first want to say for those who celebrate, Happy New Year!
Thank you.
You betcha. We are here tonight to discuss an application that was carried over from last month. Reason being is that we heard the comments from both the board and the public, and we understand that the proposed improvement itself had to be more consistent with both the zoning ordinance as well as the master plan. Initially, we had proposed to reduce the size of the habitable floor area by approximately 300 square feet because we thought that was satisfactory considering the fact there was an oversized lot. With that being said, we have since then further reduced the habitable floor area now by approximately 479 square feet. The total, I believe, is 3519. And we will have tonight two professionals testifying to both the proposed changes as well as the variance relief, and our architect, Aiman, as well as our planner, Administrator Nick Graviano. If I may, I'd just call my first witness up, our architect, Aiman Cedra, to go over the revised plans.
Please do. Cedra, do you swear a firm tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
I do.
Okay, Ken, please state and spell your name for the record.
Aiman Cedra, last name is Cedra, S-C-E-D-R-A.
Okay, Mr. Cedra has appeared before this board on numerous occasions, been qualified as an architect. Mr. Cedra, your qualifications as an architect in the state of New Jersey are current, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and you're going to be testifying as an architect tonight?
Correct.
Okay, Chairman?
Okay, does anyone on the board have any questions or objections regarding this witness? There being no objection, the witness is accepted as an expert in architecture.
Passata, I would just ask that your experts bring it home in terms of the testimony, okay?
We're gonna try our best, we're rounding third.
I knew you would.
Hopefully, hopefully. And Mr. Cedra, just to confirm, your license is still in good standing?
Yes.
Terrific, right, why don't you walk us through those proposed revisions that we have made?
So, we revised the floor plan that was submitted last month. We reduced the size of the building and the footprint. The layout in terms of the numbers of rooms and design didn't change much. We just reduced the square footage. For example, the first floor used to be 2,016 square feet. Now we are at 1,0729 square feet. The garage used to be 447, now it's 438. The second floor used to be 1,982. Now it's 1,791. So we have a total of habitable floor area of 3,519. The previous application, the number was 3,998 square feet. So we reduced the size of the building by 479 square feet. That's the reduction we did. The habitable floor area ratio, we are at 21.63%, which is way under the 30% that's required by the R4 zone. We also reduced the height of the building by approximately one feet. We have an open space on the second floor for the 234 here. This space is about 43 square feet. It's counted two times, but it's only used at the first floor. The design of the exterior, it's a colonial-style home. We, you know, we used some stucco on this house and stone at the base. And also, I would like to say that the design of the exterior can be tweaked by the contractor. Sometimes they change the material on the outside. But the overall design, as you see, it's a colonial-style with some modern accent. We have also casement window dark roofs, and we have standing seam roofs at the front of the building. And the attic is only accessible from a pull-down stair located at the second-floor hallway. And the attic height from the ceiling, from the top, the floor of the attic to the underside of the roof is six foot three, and the collar tie is at four feet. That's pretty much everything. Also, I would like to mention that we eliminated the front yard variance. So now we're in conformance with the front yard.
Mr. Cedra, real quick, can you just walk us through on the floor plan, just briefly, on what was reduced?
I don't think that the floor plan has anything really for the board to consider. I think we're just talking about reduction in the overall size, right?
Correct.
You know, floor plan doesn't really, it's not really jurisdictional and applicable. So the issue is actual floor area, how he cuts it up. Bedroom's don't really matter, so...
Okay.
I have no further questions for this witness.
Does anyone on the board have any questions for this witness? Does anybody in the public have any questions for this witness? Okay, your next witness, I guess.
I'd like to bring my last witness, my planner, Mr. Nick Graviano.
Okay, Mr. Graviano, do you swear a firm tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
I do.
Okay, Mr. Graviano's been, can you please state and spell your name for the record?
First name is Nicholas with an H, last name Graviano, G-R-A, he is in Victor, I-A-N.
Okay, Mr. Graviano's been accepted as a planner before this board on many occasions. Mr. Graviano, your license to practice as a professional planner in the state of New Jersey is current? Is that correct? And that's how you're going to testify tonight as a planner?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I hope that.
Does anyone on the board have any questions or objections regarding this witness? There being no objections, the witness is accepted as an expert in professional planning.
Okay, I know the board has a lot of cases tonight, I'll keep this brief. The applicant is before the board this evening requesting a C variance for the habitable floor area, whereas 3220 is permitted, the applicant's requesting 3519. I would like to note that the applicant, when revising the plan, took into consideration the maximum habitable floor area of the R3 district, which is 3520. This is actually a lot that exceeds the minimum lot size of that R3 district. So it's certainly a proposal which took into consideration the characteristics of the site and the surrounding neighborhood. That relief can be granted under the C2 criteria. With the C2 criteria, as you know, hardship need not be demonstrated. What must be demonstrated, that it relates to a specific piece of property. Here you have Block 4009, Lot 16, an oversized, irregularly shaped lot, 16,271 square feet, whereas 9,375 square feet is required. Additionally, the applicant must demonstrate that it advances purposes of zoning of the Municipal Land Use Law. This proposal advances Purpose A, promotion of the public health, safety, and general welfare of the community. And some other things of note for this application. This application reduces existing deficient side yard and aggregate side yard setbacks. Therefore, this proposal is more in conformance with the zoning ordinance requirements, therefore promoting Purpose A of the MLUL. Additionally, it advances Purpose G to provide sufficient space and appropriate location for a variety of residential uses to meet the needs of New Jersey citizens. And then lastly, it promotes Purpose I, desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangements. There is no substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance with the granting of the applicant's variance request. This is an extremely oversized lot. This lot can accommodate the additional modest 299 extra square feet with the additional 6,896 square feet of lot area that this lot provides. Additionally, there is no substantial impairment to the master plan or the public good with this proposal.
I have no further questions.
Does anyone on the board have any questions for this witness? Does anybody in the public have any questions for this witness? Does anybody in the public want to make any statements? Does counsel want to make any statements?
I appreciate the offer, but I'll waive.
Does anyone on the board want to make any statements?
I'd just like to say, thank you, Ray. I think you heard some of our concerns in the last meeting, and I think you've appropriately addressed those, so I appreciate that, so thank you.
I'll second that.
I'll third that.
Sounds like almost like a motion, almost.
I'll go in for the chairman.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
I would make a motion to approve.
I will second that.
Mr. Sher- Mr. Horn?
Approved.
Mr. Sherman?
Approved.
Mr. Kenya, approved. Ms. Yan?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Weisman?
Yes.
Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yeah, yeah.
Motion carries.
Very trouble with the button there. Thank you.
Okay, the next.
Please call the next application.
Block 2103, Lot 2012 Laurel Avenue. Application number 2025-59-3, Shaun and Shalaka Joshi and Scott.
Kenya, hold on one second.
Yeah, because Mr. Mahir's not here.
No, no, Mr. Weisman, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we're all right.
All right, it's not 10:30 yet.
Yeah, you're correct.
Chairman, I...
Yeah.
You're great.
I did it right.
Yes, yes.
You did, not only did you do it right, you did it great.
Thank you.
All right.
Can I go now?
Feel free.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, I'll repeat myself. Block 2103, Lot 20, 12 Laurel Avenue. Application number 2025-59-3, Shaun and Shalaka Joshi and Scott Hoffman. Applicant seeks approval for a first-floor addition in violation of the following section: 170-98 C2, front yard setback, 50 feet required, 46.3 proposed, 3.7 feet variance requested.
Hi there, welcome.
Thank you.
Can you identify who you are?
I'm Shaun Joshi.
I'm Shalaka Joshi.
Okay, and you're the owners of the property?
That's correct.
Okay, and you're going to present the, your request to the board tonight, correct?
That's correct.
All right, so let me swear both of you in. Do you swear a firm tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
We do.
Okay, all right, so, Mr. Chairman, why don't we let them tell us what they were looking to do?
Tell us your story.
I'll give a quick overview. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. So we're looking for approval for three and a half feet of variance. 3.7, thank you. And the main reason we're doing this is we have parents visiting from India, and when they come, they stay over for a couple of months. And so this expansion will make it easier for us to sort of be together for that period of time.
Okay. Is the front, which one is...
The front of the house.
Which one of those images is the front, Mr. Joshi?
It's the bottom right. Sorry.
You can, you can go up, that mic will, that mic will get you.
This is what we'll move up, basically.
Okay, so the, the variance you're seeking is relative to that only part of the house, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, it's not the whole frontage across?
No, no, it's just the living room.
It's just the living room and the foyer.
And the basis for moving that addition out is that you have family members, and it would be more advantageous to have more room for you and your family? Did you, did you take a look, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Did you take a look at the other homes that are next to you, whether or not they're setback? The homes to the left and right of you, are, are they further back from the road from you or closer to the road from you?
They're currently dissimilar.
They're similar?
They're similar.
Okay, so if you were to do the addition on that piece, would it be, would you be in front of them or about the same?
About the same, so the one to our left is a little further ahead, and the one to our right is a little further back, so, I mean, yeah.
So you're basically just moving out the front of the house, and you're going a little bit past the front where it is right now?
3.7 feet, yeah.
Just a couple of bit, so they're just a little...
The living room is slightly behind right now.
Now it's gonna be a tiny bit in front, okay, that's all that you're doing?
That's right, yes.
Okay, okay.
You, well, you have a full-size lot. It looks like the depth of your lot isn't as big as what the zone requires, by about 25 feet. So would it be fair to say that that's helping to squeeze you a little bit and forcing you into the front a little bit more than you would be?
Anyway, yeah. Yes, yes.
We need, we need to have some rationale.
I was just like thinking.
We're trying to have, we need rationale for why...
That's right, that's right.
Yeah, we can approve this. Does anybody else on the board have any questions or...
Yeah, and adding to that point, it appears from the plans that you also already went up in the back to the, to the setback line. It appears you're already at 40 feet, correct, in the back? So you can't really go without violating the back.
That is my understanding, yes.
Right, okay.
Does anybody else on the board have any questions for this witness? Does anybody in the public have any questions for this witness? Would anybody on the board like to make a statement? Would anybody on the board like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Kenya, yes. Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Yan?
Approve.
Mr. Weisman?
Yes.
Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Okay.
You did a really good job.
And beer not that bad, right, it's easy. Block 5,700, Lot 16, Six Carret Row. Application number 2025-64-3, Six Carret LLC. Applicant seeks approval to construct a new single-family house in violation of the following section: 170-98 C2, front yard setback, 50 feet required, 44.7 feet proposed, 5.3 feet variance requested. 170-87 CC3, habitable floor ratio 21% allowed, 30.3 proposed, 9.3% variance requested.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. John Barberula on behalf of the applicant. Tonight we have Aiman and Nick. I think you've just seen them. They are again going to testify as both architect and planner. And with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I don't think that anything happened to Aiman's license in the last 15 seconds. So I would ask that he be qualified as an architect, and we would start with him tonight.
Okay, Ms. Cedra, why don't we just do this? Do you swear a firm tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
I do.
Okay, we already have Mr. Cedra's name on the record. And I would agree with Mr. Barberula that more than likely in the past 10 minutes, Mr. Cedra's qualifications are not being called into question, at least as an architect.
Thank you.
I think we can accept you as an expert architect.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Aiman, could you please go over the proposal before the board, what we're asking for tonight, and what you have designed for this application?
Sure, we're proposing a single-family house. The first floor consists of the, all the living spaces, and also we have a guest bedroom. And also we have two-car garage. The floor area for the first floor is 1,556, and the garage is 425. To the left of that, we have the basement. The basement is a big space for, will be used as a rec room. And also we have another bedroom with its own egress access on the left-side corner. Also, we have a media room and a playroom. The area for the basement is 1,556. The second floor on the left here consists of four bedrooms with closets and bathrooms. Also, we have a laundry room. We have the pull-down stair here, it's in the hallway, as you see it, to access the attic. The attic is only accessible with the pull-down stair. The area for the second floor is 1,664. That will give us a total of habitable floor area of 3,220. Also, I would like to mention that we have about 90 square feet of an open space at the foyer. It's only used at the first floor, but it's open at the second floor, so it's not used at the second floor. The, the house is a colonial-style house with, we have James Hardy shingles at the top. We have some AZAC panels. We also have at the first floor the horizontal lap siding with stone underneath at the base. And for, regarding the height for the attic, we have seven foot nine from the attic floor to the, to the unders, to the underside of the ridge beam. And we have the collar tie being at five foot six. The attic will not be used as a habitable attic. It will be only for storage and only accessible with the pull-down stair. That's it.
No other questions of the architect, or just the architect for questions for the board?
Does anyone on the board have any questions for the architect? Or for this applicant, I should say.
Yeah, question. Are you keeping the front wall of the house exactly where it is? That's what it looks like in the...
Forty-four, yeah, approximately close, 44.3... No, actually, the existing house at 39.7. We're sitting the front wall back to 44.7.
Okay, so you're demolishing that?
So it's just moving back a little bit.
Yeah, so you're demolishing...
The current house is much closer.
It's closer?
We're making the condition more compliant.
Got it, thank you.
But it still doesn't meet the 50. That's why we gave you the table showing the various lots.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Does anybody else on the board have any questions for this witness? Does anybody in the public have any questions for this witness? Okay.
That's what I asked Nick, as a planner.
Ken?
His credentials, he's been here a planner before. If you could swear him in and ask that you would accept him for planning this.
I agree. Mr. Graviano, do you swear a firm tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
I do.
Okay, Mr. Graviano obviously has been qualified as a planner, and his credentials have just likewise were just approved. We can accept him as an expert in planning.
Thank you. Nick, you've heard the testimony of Aiman. You've also had an opportunity to study the plans. You also have seen the proposal, the documents that we have given in terms of the average of the front yard setback. You are familiar with the property, and I would ask that you go through the justification why this is in compliance with the Municipal Land Use Act.
Certainly, the applicant's requesting two variances before the board this evening. The first relates to the habitable floor area variance. 21% is permitted, 30.3% is proposed. Additionally, the applicant's requesting a C variance for the front yard setback. 44.7 feet is being requested, whereas 50 feet is required. However, while it relates to the front yard setback request, I would like to note that the applicant is meeting the ordinance' front yard setback averaging requirements. Morgan Engineering in May of 2025 conducted surveys on the surrounding properties, found the average front yard setback to be 44.3 feet. The applicant's proposing 44.7, whereas 39.7 exists today. So the applicant's providing an additional five feet in front yard setback then exists today. When it comes to that variance, that variance certainly could be granted under the C2 criteria, advancing purposes of zoning A, G, and I of the Municipal Land Use Law without substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance because it is within the spirit of the front yard setback averaging ordinance. The second and more crucial variance request being tonight is the FAR variance. The applicant is on a drastically undersized lot. 10,635 square feet exists on the lot today, whereas 15,000 square feet is required by ordinance. So essentially, the applicant has a lot size which is more akin to the R4 district. It's a little over 1,300 square feet bigger than it would be required in the R4 district. So the applicant, when preparing these plans, as in the other application I was on, took great care in designing this house, and the square footage being requested is akin to the maximum square footage of the R4 district. So this is certainly a request which is befitting of the site and the neighborhood. There are houses of this size in the, in the surrounding neighborhood, so this is not a house that would be out of the ordinary. The lot can certainly accommodate the increased FAR as the applicant is not requesting any setback or coverage variances. Additionally, the building coverage, 23.8% would be permitted under this lot. The applicant's coming in at 19.8%, so it's 4% less than the building coverage could be. So this is certainly a situation, when you're looking at the floor area ratio variance, that the site can accommodate this dwelling, withstanding the request for the increased FAR. That variance certainly could be granted without substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance. The applicant's undersized lot is dictating this FAR variance, and strict application... and strict application of the municipality zoning ordinance would create practical difficulties in this scenario.
And as we indicated, the maximum, we're not anywhere near covering the maximum coverage allowed.
We're not close to the maximum coverage allowed. As I said, 23.8% is permitted. We're at 19.8%. Additionally, this property is, you know, meeting off-street parking setbacks and all other requirements, so...
And we aren't asking for any side yard, rear yard variance, and we are in compliance with the average setback in front.
Yes.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I submit Nick's, for any questions from the board in reference to his testimony.
Does anybody on the board have any questions for this witness?
I do, sorry. So the porch is shown at six feet, and then the stairs are shown two feet beyond the porch. So you're allowed to violate six feet of the front yard setback. So I believe you're at eight feet.
We can fix that.
Yeah, can we revise the plans?
Can revise it.
Thank you.
So stipulate to correct that issue.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Amon's very good at quick revisions, as you know. Thank you for pointing that out. I didn't realize that in my opening. Thank you. That's all I have.
Does anybody else?
That's all the witnesses I have on this application.
Anybody have any other questions? I actually do have a quick one for the architect, and he might have said it, and I might have missed it. What is the height from the floor of the attic area to the top of the ridge? How high is that?
Sure. Seven, six?
I have it to the bottom of the ridge, so maybe we'll add a foot to that.
Okay.
So I have seven'9". So it will be eight'9".
So about eight and three-quarters, okay.
And then the collar tie at five'6".
Right, that was lower. I do remember you saying that, I just couldn't remember. Go ahead. Oh, hold on. Does anybody else have any questions for either witnesses, as I jump the gun? Okay? Anybody in the public have any questions for this witness? Does anybody in the public want to make any statements regarding this application? Turn it back to you, counselor.
Well, you're very short. You have a very big calendar. I mean, obviously, based upon, we're going to modify the very good catch here with the front porch. That'll be taken care of. But Nick clearly indicated that the Municipal Land Use Act has been met, that the board has sufficient legal precedent here with what we have presented to make this a good application. I believe it is a good application. And I believe we met all the criteria. I would ask that you approve, same. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Does anyone on the board want to make any statements? Does anybody on the board want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve. Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mr. Kenia, yes? Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Weisman?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. Again, I hope you had a wonderful New Year.
Thank you.
Okay, block?
I almost can dance out now.
Oh.
You can dance your ass-
We can do a horror?
Almost.
Okay.
Don't challenge Mr. Barberula. He knows me, and I might do that. Thank you so much. I appreciate all the consideration you've given to the owner.
Thank you.
Block 2907, lot 16, Four Doreen Road, application number 2025-75-V, Road at Holmes. Applicant seeks approval to construct a single-family house in violation of the following section: 170-98 C2 Front Yard Setback 50 feet required, 45.72 feet proposed, 4.28 feet variance requested. 170-87 CC3 habitable floor area ratio 21% allowed, 27% proposed, 6% variance requested.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Passata. I'm still with the firm, Lot Sales Commissar Gross, I hope. I represent the applicant at Road at Holmes. In connection with this application, as previously mentioned, it is for both a ratio as well as a front yard setback relief. The application itself is proposing to demolish the existing improvements and develop a new single-family home, which would include a new driveway porch as well as a patio. The subject lot itself is significantly undersized. In addition, the lot decks are also undersized, and that's what's triggering the front yard setback variance relief and also the ratio variance relief. Tonight, as always, I'll have two professionals testifying. I'll have an architect, Amon Cedra, as well as Nick Graviano as my planner. I believe they've already been sworn in as witnesses today, but I guess let's reiterate it one more time.
Right. You know, we're going to do, we're going to do-
Go ahead.
There was point in going on. All right, so Ms. Cedra and Mr. Graviano, why don't we do this clip-in style? Do you both swear a firm and tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
I do.
You do.
Okay. And both Mr. Cedra, who's qualified as an architect, and Mr. Graviano, qualified as a planner. And we can accept, we can accept you both under qualifications for this application. I just want to make one quick note. I see some people have come up front. You'll be given an opportunity, as we explained earlier, to ask a question of each of the witnesses. And at the end, if you want to make a statement, that's when that comes at the end, okay? So I just want to make sure it's clear, because it gets confusing to some people. That's fine, no. I just want to make sure if you want to chime in, that you chime in at the right time. I'll prompt you. Back to you, sir.
Absolutely. All right, so my first witness, Mr. Cedra, why don't you walk us through what we're proposing here tonight?
Sure. We are proposing a single-family house for this lot. The first floor consists of all the living spaces, and also we have a guest bedroom. We have two-car garage on the right side. The second floor consists of the sleeping area, where we have four bedrooms. And every bedroom has a closet and a bathroom. Also, we have the laundry room. The attic will be accessible with a pull-down stair that you see here in the hallway. The area for the first floor, we have 1,749 square feet. The garage is 436. The second floor being 1,767. The habitable floor area is 3,516, with the floor area ratio being 27%. We also have 99 square feet of open space on the second floor that relates to the two-story foyer, counted two times, but used only at the first floor. And the house is a colonial-style house with the stucco facade. We have two bay towers at the front with AZAC panels. We have stone at the garage wall and also at the base of the building. And the building height, the building height was in the required height. It's actually 31'11", almost 32 feet. The attic is only accessible with the pull-down stair. The height of the attic from the attic floor to the underside of the ridge beam is 7'4", boarding the collar tie at approximately five feet. That's pretty much everything I have.
Just to reiterate, other than the variance release being requested here tonight, all other bulk standards are complying, correct?
Correct.
And the height of the house itself is approximately a little over three feet, under what is permitted within the zone?
Correct.
Thank you. I have no further questions for this witness.
Does anyone on the board have any questions for this witness? Does anybody in the public have any questions for this witness? Please stand up. Do you want to- Why don't we swear again? Do you swear a firm and tell the truth before this board?
Yes, I do.
Can you please state and spell your name for the record?
David Levitt, L-E-V-I-T-T, Six-Dorian Road, Livingston, New Jersey.
Okay, put your hand down. All right, you have a question for the architect?
Yes, I'm concerned the property, we're on a hill, and I'm concerned on-
This is, this is time for a question to the architect. If you have concerns, the board is more than willing to hear them, but the time to do that is after we hear from the witnesses. So if you have a question with regard to the architectural plans themselves, that's the time, this is the time to do that.
Yes, how, what's the distance between the end of the property on the left-hand side to where-
The house?
The house is?
I can give you that in a sec. Can you zoom on this? Sure. Oh, I have to put you back in.
And I'm also concerned that-
Give him a second to answer that, and then we'll go on to the next question.
Can I copy this? I'll open it from yours, then. Okay.
It's approximately 15.58.
That's not it.
Is that correct?
So-
I have it here, actually.
So, Mr. Passata, you're representing that the distance between the homes is, between the home and the lot line?
Yes, would be approximately 15.58 at the closest corner.
All right, so you understand that, sir, what they're saying is, from the end of the building
Right.
to the lot line is the 15.58 distance. And then, obviously, whatever distance from the lot line to your home.
I did have concerns. I don't know, there's trees, and I think they were marked with trees, the demolition. How do I address that? Is this something I address now?
Well, why don't we see if Mr. Passata can, through his, address-
Okay, so you're talking about the line from the house to the property line on the left, right?
Correct.
I have 15'58. That's from the house to the-
What are you going to do about the trees when you do demolition?
Is the trees yours, or it-
Well, they're right on the line.
Well, I see the trees. They still exist. I see, is that the trees?
Why don't we, the tree removal is not part of the board's decision-making. I know it's a very valuable point for you to make as the homeowner. I would just say that maybe after we're done here, if it gets approved, maybe Mr. Passata would be so kind as to, the applicant's attorney, to talk to you about that.
Yes.
And see if there can be some understanding as to what's being done.
We'll clarify for the record for them as to what we intend on doing with those trees during construction, and also on the public notice itself, does have the contact information, reach out to Nick.
And there are another concern, that underneath that property, there's some water table that we always get leaks on our street that goes down, and the town's water company knows about it. And it seems that it's underneath, and it's a constant thing. It can't be, I don't know if it's going to be fixed once you dig everything up, and I know this is later.
To that commentary too, as well, although this board doesn't have jurisdiction
Correct.
related to the stormwater, I can attest to the fact that if this board were to find favorably, the next step in this process would be to submit for a lot surface drainage permit to the municipality, at which time the township's engineer would have an opportunity to recommend any type of stormwater improvements that he deems satisfactory to accommodate any potential issues. And that's non-negotiable.
And that's on that property, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I do have someone to call. Thank you. I appreciate it.
No worries.
Just a concern, I think it is-
It's very valid.
I'm sorry, I gave you the wrong number, actually. Can I go back to the distance from the building to the property line? I gave you, actually, the existing building, the one that's there now.
Right.
That's the number for the existing building. But I believe you're asking about the proposed building, which is 18 feet, 18.25. So you will have even more sit back on the proposed building. Almost three feet difference between the existing and the proposed.
That's why I never trust a lawyer in numbers.
Right.
So the other side is going to be longer on the right side?
Correct.
That's where the garage is.
That's where the garage is.
All right, Ms. Passata?
All right, I have no further questions for this witness. And I believe you opened it to the board and the public.
I think I did already, right?
So I would like to bring up my last witness, Mr. Nick Graviano, my professional planner.
All right, Mr. Graviano's already been sworn in and qualified.
No, that's right.
Yep.
You messed me up with the change in order. I'm very particular. All right, so the applicant is requesting, like the other application, the FAR variance, the habitable floor area variance, as well as the front yard setback variance. In terms of the front yard setback variance, the applicant is meeting the spirit of the ordinance with the averaging. As part of the application package, the applicant averaged lot 15, 17, 18, and 19. That average was within the allowance of what the applicant is proposing this evening. I would also like to note that the existing front yard setback is 46 feet. The applicant's coming here at 45.72 feet, so it's only .28 feet difference than what exists today. And as I said, it meets the average of the neighborhood lots. So certainly, that relief could be granted under the C2 criteria, advancing purposes A, G, and I, the municipal land use law, without substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance. Looking at the habitable FAR request, 21% is permitted, whereas 27% is proposed, a 6% variance. We touched on some of the aspects to this application previously, but I would just like to take note of them, because as we examine the FAR request, we examine whether or not the site can accommodate the proposed use, withstanding the request for the FAR variance. When you look at the height of the structure, the structure is three feet shorter than what's permitted by ordinance. Additionally, we discussed the minimum side yard setback to the neighbor's property who's here this evening. The applicant is proposing a side yard setback of 18.25 feet, whereas only 10 feet is proposed. Additionally, the applicant's aggregate side yard setback is plus nine feet. And as I stated, the front yard setback's only .28 feet, which is three inches smaller than what exists today. The applicant is under the habitable floor area requirement of the ordinance at 3516. And as you heard Mr. Cedra indicate before, there are those areas of the foyer that are double-counted in the calculations, so the true square footage is actually less than what's indicated on the plans. Certainly, this site can accommodate the request in FAR. Additionally, there are homes in the neighborhood which exceed the square footage, so it's certainly not out of character with the neighborhood. And then, lastly, I would like to note that this application also reduces a reduction in lot coverage, total lot coverage, whereas 37.2% exists today, and 32.9% is proposed with the application. The applicant is removing a pool and a considerable amount of pool patio concrete with this application. So certainly, the habitable floor area ratio variance, the D4 variance, and the C variance, the C2 variance, could be granted without substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance.
And just for clarification, the required side yard setback is 10 feet, whereby we are proposing 18.25?
That is correct.
Great. I have no further questions.
Does anybody on the board have any questions for this witness? I do have one question. This application is on a hill. How does, is it any effect on the neighbors downhill, I guess? Sightlines or anything else? Any comments on that?
None whatsoever.
Okay. Does anybody in the public have any questions for this witness? Come on back. Stand up.
So are you concerned because there is a hill, and we've always had, especially the water and everything else that's coming down? And I know this is a demolition question, but what happens with the demolition? It's right on my line.
So, let me, let me, no, valid question, you know, look, we, so, let me say this, and Ms. Passata kind of dealt with this before. So anytime a builder is going to do something like this builder's doing, which is basically building a new home, there's a whole series of responsibilities- which is basically building a new home, there's a whole series of responsibilities they have under building code. And the township engineering department i- and code enforcement departments are required by law to ensure that they comply. They're required by law, but then the township checks. And among the things they have to do is to make sure that what they're doing there does not impact other properties. So they have a whole series of things they have to do with regard to soil erosion control. They have to put up screens and nets and fencing and all that. So what that does, and the town enforces that. If they don't do it, then the town comes out and enforces it. So the, the applicant, should they be approved, has a long way forward in terms of building this, and among those things is to ensure that their work on that site does not impact anyone's site, whether it's yours or anybody else's. So that's, that's, that's how that operates.
I appreciate that. I just have one last question, if I can. What, if this is approved, when is the start of the construction, or is that something I speak with?
Well, there, yeah, I mean, so normally, uh, let me just say this, uh, you know, obviously, these plans, if they get approved, there, it, these are not what we call final plans. There have to be mu- there's a lot more information that has to be provided. So there is a significant, um, amount of work that has to be done before the next steps are taken. Um, so it's not like, you know, somebody's gonna come out tomorrow, but Ms. Passata, you wanna just say quick?
Yeah, absolutely. I could just tell you right now that best-case scenario for the developer, I would say three months from today, realistically, spring.
Yeah, I appreciate the board, and thank you for my concerns and my wife's concerns.
We appreciate you coming out. We always wanna hear from the public. It helps, it helps us make decisions.
It's a special little block we have in Livingston, and...
It's called Home.
Yeah, it is. Forty-three years.
Yeah. Uh, does anybody else have any questions for this witness? Does anybody wanna make a statement regarding this application? Okay? Does anyone in the, oh, sorry, back to you.
Nope.
Okay, and...
I just wanna make a quick statement. So, thank you, Mr. Wenzel, for making that comment about responsibilities of the town, but I know that we can't make this a condition of approval, but I know that you, and like, will go back and say that it's very important that they have the netting, the silt fence, and that it stays up throughout the entire length of the con- of the construction, the demolition, and that they are, they keep, um, the site clean, and, you know, don't spill over into the neighbors. It's not, it's not our purview, but it's just something that we would appreciate you just going back and reiterating the importance of keeping the site clean.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And does anybody else wanna make a statement on the board? Would anybody like to make a, oh, sorry, does someone say yes? Oh. Oh, Mr. Passata's definitely gonna be interested in talking to you, don't worry about it.
Yeah, you don't, you don't have to worry about motivating me now.
Uh, would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Ms. Yon?
Yes.
Mr. Kenia, yes. Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Weisman?
Yes.
Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Mr. Gere?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, let's go, let's go, rock and roll.
Please call the next application.
Block two thousand four, lot forty-seven, twelve Tilden Court. Application number twenty twenty-five dash seventy-six dash V, Rodak Homes. Applicant seeks approval to construct a new single-family house in violation of the following section, one seven zero dash eighty-seven C.C. Three habitable floor area ratio, twenty-one percent allowed, twenty-five point seven percent proposed, four point seven percent variance requested.
Good evening again, and yet again, my name is Matthew. I think it's Matthew, yeah. Passata, Sils Commiss and Gross, and I represent, again, Rodak Homes, uh, related to this subject property. Uh, the applicant is here tonight requesting relief for ratio, uh, variance. Uh, specifically, although the ra- ratio exceeds what is permitted, the actual habitable floor area itself is undersized, the lot itself also is undersized, and the other issue with this subject site is the topography. Uh, we'll get into further details about that in a moment, but first, let me, uh, introduce my architect.
Alright, why don't we get everybody, we'll get everybody sworn.
Yeah.
Do it, do it again. They, they love raising their hands. Do you swear a firm, tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
I do.
I do.
Alright, Ms. Sed- both Ms. Sedger and Mr. Graviano have been previously qualified, uh, in the, uh, respective fields of architecture and, and planning, uh, and they're gonna testify as to this application.
Perfect.
Go ahead, Ms. Passata.
Alright, Mr. Sedger, why don't you walk us through what we're looking to do?
Sure.
Thank you.
Um, so, the design for this house, um, the first floor has all the living spaces and also a guest bedroom. The first floor consists of, uh, one thousand seven hundred and three square feet, and the garage is four hundred and fifty. Uh, to the left of that, we have the basement. It's an open rec room in the basement. Uh, we also have a bedroom with its own egress access, and a small media room. The second floor consists of the sleeping area, where we have four bedrooms, closets, and bathrooms, and also we have a laundry room. Uh, we have also the pull-down stair here in the hallway. The design of the exterior, um, it's a colonial-style home. We have board and batten on the second floor, and we have, uh, horizontal lap siding at the first floor with a stone base at the bottom, uh, casement window, modern accent. Um, we have also here, uh, AZAC panels on this small tower here. Um, the second floor area, also, I forgot to say that, um, the livable area for the second floor is, uh, one thousand eight hundred and seventeen, with the floor area, uh, ratio being twenty-five point seven four percent, and the habitable floor area being three thousand five hundred and twenty. And, uh, we have an open, uh, ninety-five square feet of open space on the second floor, um, used only at the first floor. Lastly, the attic, uh, is, as I mentioned, accessible with the pull-down stair. We have a ceiling height in the attic, uh, of being six foot six, and the color type being at four feet. We meet also the, the height requirement for this zone, where the ordinance, uh, requires thirty-five feet, we are at thirty-two, six and a half feet. That's it?
Great. I have no further questions for this witness.
Does anyone in the, on the board have any questions for this witness? Anybody in the public have any questions for this witness? Please. Step forward, sir.
Thank you.
Alright, sir, see, you just have your sworn. Do you swear a firm, tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
I do.
Okay, can you please, uh, state and spell your name for the record?
Robert Lazer, L.A.Z.E.R., ten Tilden Court, of next door.
You beat me to it. Okay, go ahead, sir.
Couple of questions, uh, I hope this is the right form to do that. As the second floor seems to be much larger in size and perhaps height than the existing home, was a analysis of the reduction in sunlight and sunshine on my property considered?
Which property is you? The one on the left?
As you're looking at the house, I'm on the right, on the corner house. Part of the reason I'm asking is I had a significant investment in completely redoing my yard a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
And I'd hate to see that, um, impacted.
Actually, the right side is way far from the property line, given that we are, we actually set the house almost to the left side, with the side yard being ten foot on the left side. The, the side yard is thirty-two point seventeen on the right side, which is, which is the side adjacent to you. So you, you will have a similar condition as the existing house. The existing house was a two-story house as well.
Okay, so you're saying there should be no reduction in the amount of sunshine or sunlight my yard receives?
We haven't done a study for a reduction, to see if there's a reduction or anything. But, uh, we meet the, the requirements of the ordinance in relationship to the setbacks and the building height. We don't have any violation of the code for that.
Okay. Uh, the second question is, there are three trees by the driveway. They belong to twelve Tilden, but at least one of them has a significant encroachment at the base unto my property, and I'd like to know, is that taken into consideration? And how will that be remediated?
Well...
If in fact the trees are taken down as part of the destruction?
There is one tree sticking down, which is this one. Is this the one you mentioned? This one?
It's the third tree closest to the driveway.
Closest to the driveway?
There's three large trees on the sidewalk.
The two large ones, they're staying. The one in, in your, actually, kinda like in your, across from your lot, that's staying, that's, doesn't relate to this property. But there is one on the property, it's a fifteen, fifteen-inch tree on the right side. This is, will get removed.
I, I didn't, I missed that, I'm sorry.
Uh, a few, uh, over here.
There's three, there's three trees on the driveway.
So this is, this, this one will get removed. These two big trees will stay.
There's three trees there.
And there is one here, actually. So this is the existing, um, existing survey for the house, for the existing house that's there now. So as you see, one, two, and then I, I suppose you mentioned that one, the fifteen-inch one, correct?
Is that, where's the driveway?
The driveway's here.
Okay.
So it's on the right side of the driveway.
You're missing, I believe you're missing a tree.
There is a small one, fourteen-inch tree. Is that the one you mentioned?
That's not what I'm talking about. You have two large trees there by the driveway. You're missing a third tree. The one that's closest to the driveway encroaches probably five or six feet unto my property at the base.
That could be the eighteen inch, but that's not in your property, that's on the right of way.
If I may intervene, uh, in the event there is any type of tree removal, we'll be subject to submitting for a permit, which will be the jurisdiction of the township's engineering department, not of this board's.
Understand.
On a side note, though, if you wanna discuss in further detail what are your construction plans are, my contact information is on the public notice, you're more than welcome to reach out.
No, I'm not concerned about the construction, and I know Rodak takes down trees all the time. Do a lot of walking in town, and I see his construction in a lot of places where I walk. Um, so I know the tree cutting is fine. My concern is around, not my concern, my question is, once they do that, will my yard be remediated where that tree is currently encroaching on the yard?
So let me, let me, let me say this, if you, you, the, the builder has, not jurisdiction of the board, but just FYI, the, the builder has, or anybody who owns property next to somebody else, they can't do something on their property that damages your property. So if there's damage to your property, there is an obligation by that property owner to remediate it.
Okay.
So, I'm, I'm, and I'm sure that, as I said before to the prior person, that Mr. Passata would love to talk to you and make sure that that's gonna be taken care of.
Well, it sounds like I have a couple of months.
Yes, you certainly do. But feel free, you can call me tonight if you want.
That's fine. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
No, thank you for your, uh, questions. Does anybody else in the public have any questions for this witness?
Just to redirect real quick with it, uh, Mr. Sedger?
Please.
Mr. Sedger, it's approximately today, a setback of about thirty-five feet from this gentleman's parcel, is that correct?
Yes, thirty, uh, thirty-two point one seven.
And now what we're proposing is approximately thirty-two point one seven, right?
Correct.
And in your expert opinion, would you say that's sufficient light air and space?
Correct.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Okay. Then, um, you, uh, I guess, does anybody else on the board have any questions? Keep on losing track of moving around so much. Okay, back to you.
Alright, terrific. Let me call up my last witness, Mr. Nick Graviano, to walk us through the justification.
Certainly, uh, this, this is solely a habitable floor area variance request. Uh, twenty-five point seven percent is being requested, where twenty-one percent is permitted in the R3 district. This relates to a specific piece of property known as block two thousand four, lot forty-seven. This is a thirteen thousand six hundred seventy-seven square feet parcel, whereas fifteen thousand square feet is required, so the property, uh, is undersized. Uh, the applicant is proposing a home that, uh, meets the habitable floor area, uh, requirement of three thousand five hundred twenty square feet, so is not requesting that variance as well. As we heard, you know, previous testimony, the, the side yard setback to the neighbor's property is in excess of twenty-two feet than what's the minimum required of the ordinance. Additionally, the house is thirty-two point five five feet, whereas thirty-five feet is required. Um, so it's a two point four five feet lower than what it could be by ordinance. Certainly, with respect to the neighbor, there's no, uh, impairment of light air and open space with this proposal. Uh, the applicant is meeting the required off-street parking. Also, I'd like to note that great care and consideration went into the design of this home, given the topography of the parcel. Uh, you will notice topography in the rear. Um, so the applicant took numerous site visits to design a home that's certainly befitting of this site and the surrounding neighborhood. The D4 variance request, uh, the property, uh, certainly can accommodate the proposed use without substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance, and without substantial detriment to the public good.
I have no further questions.
Does anyone in the, uh, board have any questions for this witness? Does anybody in the public have any questions for this witness? Anybody in the public like to make a statement regarding this application? Back to you, sir.
Back to you.
Okay. Would anybody on the board like to make a statement?
I just wanna make the same statement that I made on the last application, about going back and making sure that there's a silt fence that stays up to the entire, um, time that the construction's going on, and that the lot is clean, and, or, and the refuse is removed and taken care of. That's all.
Absolutely. I will relay that.
Would anybody on the board, anybody else wanna make a statement, sorry? Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mr. Kenia, yes. Uh, Ms. Yon?
Yes.
Mr. Weisman?
Yes.
Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Mr. Gere?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, block three hundred one, lot ten, Ford Dermon Terrace, application number twenty twenty-five dash seventy-eight dash V. Rodak Homes, again. Applicant seeks approval to construct a retaining wall in violation of the following section, one seven zero dash ninety-one B, two B, front yard fence, retaining wall, four feet allowed, twelve point nine nine feet proposed, eight point nine nine feet variance requested. One seven zero ninety-one B, sixteen-tiered retaining wall, aggregated height, ten feet allowed, twelve point nine nine feet proposed, nine feet variance requested.
Good evening yet again, and yet again, my name is Matthew Passata from the firm Sils Commiss and Gross, related to this application. My client is Rodak Homes, and they were successful in the heavy lift of developing a single-family home that did not need ratio or floor area variance leap in a twenty-si- twenty-six thousand square foot lot. But, given the topography, they do need significant variances related to the retaining wall, so they are not for aesthetic purposes, but truly for, uh, stormwater and site safety. Uh, tonight, I will just have one witness, Mr. Nick Graviano, to walk us through the subject site and why we are requesting this relief.
Okay, uh, Mr. Graviano, swear a firm, tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
I do.
Alright, Mr. Graviano, before, has been, uh, qualified in the field of planning and would be testifying in the field of planning with regard to this application. Is that correct, Mr. Graviano?
Yes. Okay.
You can do it a lot, I guess.
No, so, uh, this application before the board this evening is solely for C variances related to the, uh, front yard fence variance and the tiered retaining wall aggregate height. Uh, the applicant is requesting a, uh, twelve point nine nine, uh, f- foot retaining wall in the front yard, requesting the variance, as well as the tiered retaining wall height. Uh, you will see numerous lines of contours on this proposed plan. Uh, the applicant's, uh, request for the retaining wall, uh, relates to the driveway area, um, in the front of the dwelling. Uh, that's, that's what triggers the variance, as well as retaining walls, uh, on the side. Uh, that's, that's what triggers the variance, as well as retaining walls on the side, sides and rear of the property. Uh, there is extreme topography on this property. As Mr. Passata indicated, these retaining walls are not being done, uh, for aesthetic purposes. Uh, this is what the engineer felt was best to accommodate the proposed structures and accessory structures on site. So when it comes to this variance request, uh, relief certainly could be granted, uh, under the C1 criteria, uh, whereas extreme topographical conditions affect this property, and strict application of the municipality's zoning ordinance would create exceptional difficulties and practical difficulties to the applicant of developing this property. Uh, certainly, these variances could be granted without substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance, as they relate to an extreme topographical condition on the site.
Uh, Mr. Graviano, considering the steep slopes, can you please provide to us what that distance is between the minimum and the maximum that we are contemplating here on the site?
Uh, in, in terms of?
Elevation?
Of elevation, yes, it, it is a, um, we have a low point of eighty-five feet, uh, whereas the top of the property comes in at a hundred and twelve feet. So it drops from a hundred and twelve feet in the back of the property to eighty-five feet in the front of the property.
So you got approximately a twenty-seven foot drop?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, I have no further questions for this witness. Thank you. I, I, I did it a couple times in my head, just to give myself the confidence.
Can you, can you show us exactly where the fence is? Because, I wasn't sure.
There, there's, there's fencing for the pool along the back and sides of the property. You'll see proposed aluminum rail fence.
And how high is that fence?
That fence, that, that combined height is, um, within ordinance allowance, because it relates to the front yard. It's four feet in height.
Just for clarification, that variance relief being requested is related to the front yard setback?
Correct.
Thank you.
And where's that fence?
By the driveway, is that correct?
By the driveway, and along the side retaining walls, there's fencing.
And that's ten feet high?
Or, yeah, no.
I think it's the walls, the walls.
The wall height. There's a portion of the wall.
But is there, is, on this plan, the only thing that shows is fencing on this plan is really from the side of the house, all the way around the back of the house? There's nothing on the front of the plans that show anything about fencing, just the proposed keystone wall?
That's, that's considered fencing.
That's what's taken.
Well, my only question with that is, according to the ordinance, for any, for any more, any wall that's over five feet, five feet or more, sixty inches or higher, you have to put a four-foot-high fence on that, and there is no fence shown on this wall. So that's why I'm trying to understand why there's no fence.
Will, will amend the plans to show the fence on the wall?
What kind of fence would that be, a chain link fence?
You can't, you can't, you'd have to come up front, we'll get to you in a second. Once we figure out.
It's, it's a decorative rail fence, it looks like a wrought iron fence, but it's aluminum.
So that wrought iron fence that we have, that's part of also the rear yard and the side yard, is it your testimony that we would extend that down to the property line?
We would meet all applicable ordinance requirements to extend the fence if required by code.
Thank you.
And the twelve point nine-nine for the retaining wall happens on both sides of the driveway? One side of the driveway? Because it's tiered walls on both sides?
Yes, there are tiered walls on both sides. I do believe that calculation, it did include the fence, because I'm not seeing a top of wall or bottom wall that, that is twelve point nine-nine feet.
That's where I was getting really lost.
Yeah, I think, I only, only spot that I saw where there's even twelve feet, it was like on the, was it like on the left side, right, where about where that curve is on the, on the top? That's, between those two walls, it's about twelve feet.
Yeah, I, I reviewed the top and bottom of wall calculations. Um, maybe I wasn't clear with my testimony before, but I, that number probably did include the fence, because I'm not seeing a number that meets that, that twelve point nine-nine.
So is it your testimony here tonight, that the subject application would be completely compliant with this municipality's ordinance, and the retaining walls being proposed here tonight are not for purposes of aesthetics, but rather for site safety and stormwater management?
Well, the applicant's requesting the, the, the height variances of the walls and fencing. Uh, but yes, in all other aspects, these applicants compliant with the code. And these, these variances are being requested due to the extreme topographical conditions on the site.
So is the recommendation of the civil engineer that we need these retaining walls in order to accommodate the proposed improvement?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And just for further clarification, if I look on the north side, the left side of the driveway, there's a wall, and eight feet later, there's another wall. The fence will be on top of the second wall, which is the higher wall, if I have that correct?
It could be on either, it says on the ordinance, it could be, the, the construction official could choose which wall it would be on. It probably would be the top wall, but it could be on.
It's a discretion of Mr. Sherman.
It'll be on one of the walls.
Yes. Unless you guys put a condition.
I'm not going to try to up, upstage the, uh.
The applicant will satisfy the construction official and township engineer.
So at some point, there'll basically be a fence going around the entire property, except for some small areas by steps and stuff, it looks that way?
Yes, that's correct.
Yes. There's, there's, there's a pool, so a fence is definitely going to be required in the rear yard.
Backyard is fenced, but then coming all the way to the front is fenced too.
But now we're going to pull up to the front as well?
Yes.
Correct.
Sorry, is the driveway being widened, is, so is, is the driveway staying the same width?
What's going straight now?
What?
It was going out to the right, now it's going straight.
But is, oh, okay.
Yeah, they're modified.
So it's not?
It's, it's a modified driveway. Additionally, the applicant is accommodating stormwater management on site, which does not exist today. And that's, that's another reason for the proposed retaining walls, to provide that area in the front yard to accommodate the stormwater management.
Understood, yeah.
And just for clarification, Mr. Graviano, the proposed improvements will include, not only the single-family home, but also the retaining walls, the fence, the pool, the patio, porch, as well as the modification of the driveway?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And you'll be maintaining all the offsets shown from the property line?
Yes.
Does anybody else on the board have any questions for this witness? Does anybody in the public have any questions for this witness? Please, come on up. You're the next contestant.
Hi, how are you?
Sir, do you swear a friend, tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
Yes.
Okay, can you please state and spell your name for the record?
David Korr, K-O-R-R.
An address?
Eighty-four North Rockledge.
Go ahead.
Uh, we've kind of like cat a corner to the property, so I'm familiar with the topography, topography back there. It's, it is a steep hill, and you've got the Nike missile base right behind there. There's been a significant water issue coming out of that park, which was, in the last ten years, remediated by the county, by putting in drains up at the park. But it's still, uh, my neighbor Ellen has a, a problem with water coming off this slope on the park. What kind of retaining wall are you putting in the back of the property against this Riker Hill Park?
The retaining wall doesn't butt the park, the retaining wall is, is recessed into the property.
How, how far in?
The closest portion would be sixteen point six-four feet.
And what's that made of, this retaining wall?
Keystone block.
And it will be visible above ground, obviously?
No, it's designed to conform with the grade.
So there is going to be drainage behind this wall?
The drainage will be reviewed by the township professionals.
You're going to need some kind of drainage behind this wall?
Sir, first, you, you, you've maneuvered your way away from the mic, but you have to say by the mic.
Trying to see the graph.
Yeah, I, I understand, there's no problem. We just want to make sure we get you on the record.
Okay.
But, let me, let me say this, and I think maybe you were here before when I was talking to the other gentleman about generally with things with regard to, um, drainage, uh, obviously, they have an obligation to ensure that the site, uh, is built correctly, that there's code, building code they have to meet, even with regard to the retaining wall. When they put up the retaining wall, they're going to have to get permits. Uh, even their plans show how that, um, drainage is going to be. Obviously, the plans have to become more, um, specific. But the township, uh, code enforcement and construction officer is the one that would review that the retaining wall is placed correctly, and that it has the proper, um, drainage and, uh, security, so that it doesn't fail.
I would just like to piggyback on what Mr. Wenzel said. This is one of those situations where you have two layers of oversight at the municipal level. Not only will the engineer be looking at this, but this also goes through the construction department. So the applicant will be having to satisfy numerous professionals on the township end with the ultimate design of, of the retaining wall system.
Now, I also understand that the, uh, garage is going to be under the house?
Yes, it will be. Yes.
How much into the ground you have to blast to get to this underground garage?
That's, that's awesome, that's something that's before the board.
That's not part of my testimony, but, you know, we do have a professional here that could speak to the design of the dwelling.
But that's also outside the scope of tonight's variance relief being requested.
Well, my issue is, is this is going to be a tremendous amount of blasting. Obviously, you're going to use pneumatics versus dynamite?
So, so sir, all of those questions are all one-hundred percent handled through the engineering department and the building department, that's not before this board? Valid concerns, I'm not saying they're not valid concerns, but there are requirements for construction that, and I think maybe you heard me before about putting up soil erosion controls. Certainly, this site is going to have to deal with that, uh, in terms of anything, in terms of construction, timing, noise, um, what's being done, vibration, that's all covered by the township engineering department.
My neighbor was here talking to the engineer the other day, and he didn't understand the plans either.
Well, that's, well, I don't, well, I don't know what was said, that's all third party, but I would just say, eventually, what will happen is, the engineer will get a final, uh, more complete set of plans. He'll go through the engineering department, go through the building department, and that's the next steps.
Well, don't you think you should hold off for that, before you vote on it?
No. That's not out, that's completely outside the jurisdiction of the board. The board only is here for the variance. In terms of how the, how the building is built, and whether it's code, that's completely outside the board's authority. It's within the township's role and control through their building and code enforcement department.
Also, another issue is, there used to be an air force base up there. Any kind of blasting, or moving a significant amount of soil, is going to unleash whatever those guys buried up there.
Well, I, I, I don't know what they, what those guys buried up there.
There's all kinds of things up there.
Yes, well, once again, those are all things that I am probably one-hundred percent sure that the township is aware of.
The engineer had no idea how to read those plans.
Well, uh, then, that's, it'll have to be, when, when the engineer gets it, he'll have to review it.
Okay. I have lots of questions, but you guys can't answer.
Unfortunately, as it was noted, our jurisdiction is limited to both variances and other variances that they come before us asking for relief, and then it goes on, because they have to establish the size of what they're building, and then they, they'll go and do file design. Maybe there's only an inch of rock that has to come out, maybe there's ten feet of rock. They'll have to make a decision on how they do that, and they'll have to present that. There's, you know, besides Livingston, there are Jersey codes, and there's international building codes, and they all have requirements that have to be met for vibration, disturbance, et cetera. So, they might have to put in a monitoring plan, maybe they don't, we don't know. But that's, that's way down the line.
Okay.
I'm just trying to explain, just so to say, good questions.
There might be an EPA issue, that's what I'm saying.
It could, it could be, and, you know, you're free to discuss with anybody of official, official nature in any department, anywhere, as a citizen, you can bring it to anybody's attention.
Well, who do you bring it to in this town that can explain what they want to do?
Okay, well, you, you, like I said, the engineering department, the building department, but of course, they got to get approval first. They don't have approval at this point, that's what they're asking for tonight, so they have to go through many steps, and the first step is here, and then eventually to the engineering and building and code enforcement departments.
I just want to say one last thing before we wrap up, because I think we're going to wrap up in a minute. It really wouldn't even be appropriate for us to comment on this, because that's not anything that we have, that's not our purview, that's not what we oversee. So people who come in front of the zoning board, we're looking at a specific thing, we're looking for, um, passing, um, variances. So, it's not something that we could even address, because it's not even in our, you know, what we're supposed to be doing. So the best thing really is to do is to just be persistent with the engineer and keep calling, and if they don't, then speak to somebody else, but clearly, this, this, this project will not go forward unless it has the appropriate, um, people looking at it, making sure that everything is in line.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
We appreciate your time, and sorry we couldn't answer more of your questions. Where was I? I think, I think we're done?
Yes.
We did questions, any, any other questions? Um, okay, I think we're done with questions. Would anybody like to make a statement? Come on forward, oh.
I have a question for the board, I don't know if you want to go first.
Go ahead.
Do you have a question?
Yeah. Uh, two questions, just so I understand it better, because I, I can't read the, it's not my field of expertise, the plans. So, and I think this is what you're testifying to, there's no portion of a retaining wall where, if you went over the wall, you'd be going down more than four feet, except portions that would have a four-foot fence on the top. I just, I just don't want unwittingly that, be approving something that's, I assume there's safety regs, but I just want to make sure what we're approving here, because I can't.
No, there, there are portions of the wall that are six to eight feet. Just when you add the fence on top, it brings it to.
Sixty, right, so there, there is, these plans are showing at least a, a four, a, I, I think it's four feet, safe fence above that sixteen foot?
No.
No?
No, they're not.
So you could fall over this?
The plans, the plans show, i- in the back area where you see the fence, it shows a five-foot fence. If any of those areas are over fifty, there's, there's really no area in the back that's, that's more than five, five feet in height on that, on any one of those walls. The only area that would be a question would be in the front, because that is where, between the two walls, it does go over twelve feet.
And we're focused on that.
Where there is no fence, but that would be that, there would have to be a condition that, we're not, we're not waiving that requirement, you know, uh, we, they're, they're saying that they would abide by that if, if it needs a fence, it's just not listed here, so that would just have to be notated if it was going to go for approval. We're not waiving the need for a fence.
Okay, and there's, we have a code, hopefully, that a significant drop like that requires a?
Yes. Yeah, what Mr. Sherman indicated previously is, we, the engineer showed the fence for the pool in the rear yard. Did not extend that fence into the front yard, which is required by ordinance. The applicant committed to meet the ordinance requirement to put the fence on top of the wall.
Right, and, because I see, I, I was focused on the front, because that was, and I, I can't tell what I'm reading, but wherever there's required fence, there's going to be a fence, it might not be on the plans. And my second, just so I understand, because this is my first time dealing with, uh, retaining wall variation. So when they say the, our ordinance provides for a, a ten-foot maximum, so you could do two, or maybe even three different stepped retaining walls, but the ordinance says that they want you to do, from beginning to top, they want you to do a max of ten feet. So this is a really steep property, it seems like you have to go over. But when I say have to, when we have an ordinance like this, is the expecta, is, is the expectation, so I wanted you to educate me, at least, on, as a planner, is the town saying, without a variance, we'd want you to slope it with grass? And we're looking for slope, and that's what we're looking for, the variance, that you want to say, no, there's a good reason why we shouldn't slope it, we should retaining walls? Is that, do, am I understanding that correctly?
So, I'm not an engineer, and I didn't design these plans, but I know enough to be dangerous. It would require extensive grading to meet the ordinance requirements. So this wall is accommodating the existing grade. so this wall is accommodating the existing grade as much as possible, so this site has extreme topographical conditions that necessitate a wall that's greater than the ordinance requirement, certainly justifying relief under the C1 criteria due to the extreme topographical conditions affecting this piece of property, and strip, strict application of the municipality's zoning ordinance requirement would require the applicant to do a drastic grade, grade, grading step to this site.
Got it, meaning a lot of infill or something like that, or?
Lot of more clearing, more soil and rock removal, the walls at this height help eliminate requiring that in a lot of places.
Okay, thank you.
Everyone on the board good? On that, okay, statement time, we got you.
Ellen Okamoto, oh, sorry, I'm just making, oh.
Swear for and tell truth for the zoning board tonight?
Yes.
Okay, can you please state and spell your name for the record?
It's Ellen, E-L-L-E-N, last name is Okamoto, O-K-A-M-O-T-O.
And address?
Eighty-six North Rockledge Drive, I'm actually to the right, I'm on the neighbor, to the right of the property, and I'm kind of, I think I had the same confusion that sometimes it sounds like you guys all had, was that I received this notice of hearing that said fences allowed four feet, they're proposing to make it 13 feet, and so I'm like, I don't want a 13-feet fence right next to my property, but as I, it's my understanding that the 14, or the 13 feet is going to be a combination of the retaining wall and the fence, which makes no sense, because the retaining wall is, can be 10 feet, but I just wanna, the statement I wanted to make is I understand there would be no 13-foot fence on my side of the property, it's only gonna be whatever, four, four feet, I guess, or five, or whatever, it's not gonna go beyond that, and also, I was concerned with the retaining wall because of the drainage issue, but I know that's not yours, but I was also told that they're gonna be addressing that as well, and that by leveling it, they should not have any problems with it, so that was my two points, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Could I just say one thing on that? Um, just, yeah, you're, you're on the, you're on the higher side?
Well, I'm, actually, my house is lower.
You're low, okay.
That's why it comes down, and, you know, it's a horrible hill for everybody who lives there.
Yeah, I mean, to you either way, whether on the high side or the low side, you're only gonna see the, you would see the fence, and then everything's gonna step back towards their house down, so you're not gonna, it's, nothing's gonna be higher, you know?
I just don't want a 13-feet fence next to my property. I, right now, there's a, a wooden fence that's like four or five feet, I don't know what it is, and that's fine, but when I read this notice, it seemed to indicate there would be, and no one could read the plans, I went to the planning department, they brought in the engineer, no one could figure out where this fence was, so that's another reason why I ended up showing up, and it sounds like you guys were having the same problem, looking at the plans.
Right, because it wasn't drawn in, so now it's drawn in.
Right, where is the fence?
Well, we understand, yes.
The fence is actually on her side of the property, it is shown, that is a part of the property where the retaining walls are a lot lower to that other, than that other side of the property.
Right.
On her side of the property, the largest retaining wall is roughly four feet.
But does that include the fence too, so now do I have an eight-foot?
But Nick, isn't the, the retaining wall, because you're lowering the grade really of the property in the backyard, the retaining wall isn't higher than the ground level, the retaining wall is further in holding back the ground level, so you're not gonna see the retaining wall, you would just see the fence that would be above the wall, correct? The way it looks on the plans is like you're dropping the whole grade in the entire backyard in order to accommodate the pool, and almost flattening the grade in the backyard is what it kinda appears on the plans.
You would mostly see the fence.
Okay.
And the fence would not be a 13-foot fence?
No.
And it'd be a combination of the retaining wall and the fence that's being proposed, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
But in no way would anything near her property line approach 13 feet.
Well, I kinda don't want it to be 10 feet either.
Nor, nor would it be 10 feet, you know, it'll be.
I want it to be a normal fence.
Well, I, can I ask, like, what would the fence type be, because usually, the one's portion of a retaining wall is at grade, so that, the portion that's at grade, the fence above that, we're not granting a variance on that, the height of that fence above grade, are we?
No, the engineering plans have top of wall and bottom of wall to, to show the ordinance requirements, so in a situation like right here, where you have top of wall 103.5, bottom of wall 101.0, that's two and a half feet plus the four-foot fence.
So she would only see six feet of this?
We can't have, can't have comment. Okay, let's remember, there's no variance other than the front yard, okay? The only variance, there's two variances, front yard, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Passata?
You bet.
Front yard fence, and then the tiered retaining wall piece.
Correct.
Correct, Mr. Passata?
That is absolutely correct.
And that deals with, that deals with the area in the front?
Correct.
Okay, so everything that Mr. Graviano's showing on that side, you're saying that that is all in compliance with the ordinance?
Correct.
Yeah, I'm just trying to address the neighbors' concerns, but that, that side is compliant, yes.
Not that the ordinance focuses.
I think we have another comment?
It's a kind of a statement question.
Statement.
It's Dave Corrigan. On her side of the property, it slopes way down, and their backyard also slopes that down towards her property, will they be grading it so they're gonna level it out and raise the height of this new property on, that abuts her, will there be a bigger retaining wall there that she can see with the fence on top of it?
I explained this already.
Yeah, this, this is, this area is, this area we're talking about, A is in compliance, they're not asking for any, there's no grading variance, there's no soil removal variance like there is in some towns, that area that we're looking at, I understand the level of, of concern, but the, that there is nothing before the board with regard to that site.
Well, I'm just asking, are you gonna level out that backyard so it's level, and that's gonna raise the height of what she's facing?
The applicant will be.
Mr. Graviano, Mr. Graviano, please.
We're only gonna entertain questions that relate to the jurisdiction of this board, anything outside of the scope, you can bring that before the appropriate venue.
Oh, can we talk to him after the meeting?
Yeah, he's, yeah, do you can, you can, you can certainly seek out Mr. Passata.
Okay.
He's very easy to find. And the other statements?
Yes.
Back to you.
Thank you, I just have two quick statements, number one, I would like to reiterate that the purpose of the retaining walls and the fences are not necessary for aesthetic purposes, but merely because of civil engineering, and then number two, whatever the code requirements are as they relate to retaining walls and fencing, we will comply, thank you.
Does anyone on the board wanna make any statements? Does anyone on the board wanna make any motion, make a motion?
I would make a motion to approve, just with, as long as we have the condition that they will meet all requirements for the.
And specifically with regard to the placement of the fence?
In the front yard.
That the, the code, that that would go, be subject to code enforcement.
Absolutely.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Miss Young, second, okay, Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Miss Young?
Yes.
Mr. Kenia, yes, Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mr. Wiseman?
Yes.
Miss Khan?
Yes.
Miss Beer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, block seven, seventy-one oh one, lot seven, twenty-two, Notch Hill Drive, application number 2025-62, Lavina Chowdhury, applicant, applicant seeks approval for the rear yard, raised patio and fence in violation of the following section, uh, raised pa, following says raised patio, okay, it's 170-96C4, rear yard setback, 75 feet required, 47 feet proposed, 28 feet variance requested, uh, and that was now for the fence, 170-91B2, front yard fence, four feet, and 50% open allowed, six feet and privacy fence proposed, two feet and privacy fence variance requested, 170-91B3, side yard fence, five feet allowed, six feet proposed, one foot variance requested.
Okay, and ma'am, are you Lavina Chowdhury?
Yes.
Okay, and you're the owner of the property?
Yes.
Okay, and that very nice gentleman that's sitting behind you and is motioning to himself, who is that?
He's my husband.
Okay, all right, so are you gonna be testifying tonight to this board with regard to what you're asking them for?
Yes.
Okay, so let's get you sworn in, do you swear for and tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Hmm? Oh, wait, wait, what's your name?
Lavina, Lavina Chowdhury.
Okay, I had it right, I was paying attention, the chairman sometimes questions me, just to make sure I'm listening, okay, Ms. Chowdhury, what, why don't you?
Quick question, can I join?
Oh, of course!
You can, yeah, sorry about that.
Come on in.
Yeah, can I just make sure they don't cry?
It's okay, they're children.
We all kids, we don't cry, but.
It's only the attorneys that cry.
Thank you.
So, go ahead, Ms. Chowdhury, you wanna explain to the board what you're asking them for?
Yeah, what we are asking for is to build a patio in the backyard, so as to make a usable space, right now, we do not have it, and the space is uneven, and the house, the way if you would see it, it's a tilted, it's built tilted, so if you try to build a patio around it, it falls into the variance category, and we obviously did not know about that initially, but then now we've promoted, and that's where we're trying to request to get the variance for a patio in the backyard.
So if I look at, ask a question?
Please.
So if I look at the pictures that you submitted, so thank you for that, right, it looks like you began construction and.
Because we did not.
And now stumbled into this issue, right, and that's what this is showing, I assume here is kinda a out lib.
Yes, and that is the exact one that we want to, like, but we're not going for the, any of that.
Okay, and then, it's just hard to tell from some of these pictures, but I think if I put these two together, and then somewhere along this driveway is where you're proposing to put the fence.
Uh, yeah, can, can I?
Go right ahead.
Yeah, so basically, I have.
You've gotta be by, you've gotta be. Go by the microphone, you can point.
Oh, okay.
So, just, just for the record, you're looking at the pictures you presented to the board, and one of the pictures depicts the backyard, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and Mr. Horn has asked you about something with regard to the location, so why don't you describe what, what, in order to answer his question?
Yeah, so the, the three panels, like the fence, those would be the three panels, we want it on the side yard, because to, to, to have privacy in the backyard, because right now, there is no privacy, and we have seen people taking pictures of our backyard, and I literally have a photo wherein.
It's okay, you don't have to talk about that photo and everything.
Don't, don't, don't worry about him, you're doing great.
You're doing just fine.
Yeah, so I've seen like, I'm sorry, I've seen like people like this, taking pictures.
You don't do this.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It's okay, it's okay.
So, 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 Ms. Chowdhury, it, what you're saying is that one of the reasons why you're asking the board for relief is because you want privacy for yourself and your young family, correct?
Yes, yes.
Only for the fence.
Oh, yeah, right, for the fence, understood.
Could I ask a question on that, the fence, just 'cause I drove past there, I took pictures today, not the one in that car, so, so I see that you already, since, since taking the pictures that you sent us, along the driveway, there's now a whole row of evergreens that have been planted, and you also have an aluminum open fence that you installed down the driveway, correct?
Yes.
So, are you looking to install this privacy fence at the bottom part of the driveway?
Only the last section, like three panels in the.
Right, right down at the bottom, like where the steps kinda are to go onto the porch, like that part of the driveway.
So that, so that the patio feels a little, like, not very open when kids play there.
I, I understand, okay.
And if you might have noticed, Mr. Todd, like, you see the depth, it's like around fifty.
Sir, wait, wait, you gotta get close to the mic and just, just let's, where are you in?
Okay.
Do you swear for and tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
I swear to tell the truth to the zoning board tonight.
Very good, and can we just have your name for the record, sir?
My name is Vishal Jain.
Okay, why don't you get close to the mic and then you can answer.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, like, I was just saying, you might have noticed the height.
I'm sorry, sir, one second, one second, let's, yeah, just pull the mic close.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, okay, so, sir, wait, before you go, why don't you spell your name for the record, sir? Perfect, go ahead, sir.
So I was just adding one line, that you might have noticed the depth it is, and if you see, it's like, I guess it's 10, 15 feet down, so it's very, very visible, like everything is very visible, so we just want privacy on that section, that's what I was adding.
And my, I was gonna say, and the, my last, my last question, I guess, the port, the patio itself that you're building, this is just an open patio, correct?
Yeah, what you see is what?
Yeah, it will be.
It, it would be.
Except we'll put retaining walls, we won't put these walls, we'll have to put retaining walls, I guess.
Okay, I understand.
Interlocking blocks, I mean.
Okay.
So, I guess my question would be, get what you're trying to do, get the privacy, um, the question is, you're asking for multiple different pieces here, so I'm trying to kinda help you along here, is there, you're asking for a height variance from four feet to six feet for the fence, as well as the fence, uh, according to code, is kinda 50/50 between open and closed, and you're asking for a kind of full privacy fence, I guess my question would be, is, as many houses we see in town, where the fence might have that 50/50 opening, but there are trees kind of around the fence, right, to add that privacy without having to have that second kind of variance to it, so would you be amenable to the fence, not necessarily a solid fence, 'cause I assume, are these tree, these evergreen trees I refer to, are they behind the fence or in front of the fence?
So, they are basically the evergreen trees that we have put, they are on the side yard, and then there is a driveway that goes down, and then we are planning, we, we want to, or we are asking to put three panels at least, so that patio gets covered, so because of the distance between the evergreen trees, that's why, like, otherwise, we would have put the 50/50 panels all along, but because it is more closer to the patio, and very much, like, that section, if you would see from the road, it's all of the backyard from that section, that is very open and visible, and that's why we are requesting just like that special, like, that, that section closer to the house, for the fence.
I guess, I guess just to confirm, are you saying that you're looking to put the, those six-foot panels, like, on the outs, just, just on the outside of the cinder block wall, just like there?
Yeah, just inside.
Not along the driveway, but along the cinder block wall, just in front of the patio itself, blocking between, like, where the grass is?
And the house.
Yeah, where the grass is.
Or, 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 actually, could you go up to the mic, I guess?
Yeah, I was gonna say, if you could go up there and just show us where the three panels go, that would, that would really help.
Yeah, sure, so what we are thinking, what we, from here to here, like, so one panel, two panel, and then three panel, so this would be, like, this can act as a door for mowing, and here panel, so that this section gets covered, and people from, like, here, sorry, people from, like, the road do not see this section, and the section that is here.
I, I understand, okay, so basically, you're going between the evergreen trees that are there and the patio along the driveway, just in that little section?
Yeah.
And like the little corner part, and they're like making that little spot so you can't see from the, from that corner of the road?
Yeah, just, just this small section.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have.
So, I
No, go ahead, no, go, go.
I, I mean, I have to ask an obvious question here. This, from what you testified, was triggered because someone was taking a picture. This seems like a police issue, not a fence issue. I mean, if you put up a fence that's fifty percent, you're kinda blocked. I can understand for the topography, some more height as helping to, but if it's half open, you're kinda really blocking the view, and if there's a problem with people taking pictures, we should be going to the police, not coming to a variance, because if the person who took a picture who maybe didn't like you or something, or whatever they did, for whatever reason, they go away, I still have a fence there that has no reason to be there in its configuration. So, while I know everyone's trying to help and I'm maybe not helping, I have a problem with the reason for this, that it has to be totally closed in, because we can put bushes there, we can do a lot of other things. I don't have as much of a problem with the height because of your extreme slope, and I can legally say, well, gee, a four-foot fence is not giving you really what you would get from if you were a flat land, the six-foot kinda helps you out a little bit, and, but I'll defer back to other people, 'cause I just threw a monkey wrench in.
I agree with what you're saying, I mean, also a six-foot fence, because you're at the bottom of that hill, is, becomes like a nothing fence because you can't see it from the road, so it's, the, because of the unusual topography, like, you know, having the tall fence, it's not like you're on a flat land and you have a six-foot fence now to the street, you can't even really see that fence from the street anyway, even if it was probably eight feet tall, so it's, the thing where Ed's saying, I just also don't understand why, even if you did the aluminum fence, that was the same fence you had, and still planted the evergreens all the way down, why you couldn't do that, because that would give you the same blockage and would actually grow to ten feet and you would never see the patio, anyway.
So there are areas from where you can see the, like, you have to be there, I can't explain it for sure, but if you stand on the road, it's a very, very wide lot.
I'm just gonna cut in, I think what you're hearing from the board, and I'll just chime in as well, the town has a fence, has fence ordinances, right, they have height ordinances, and then any fence facing the street has to be fifty-fifty because it has to be aesthetically pleasing to people driving by, the same reason why when you put your fence up, the unfinished side faces in, because you don't want the unfinished side facing out, because it's better for, you know, the aesthetic nature of, you know, people driving by and walking by. So it's sort of the same thing. So I think, to me, what I'm hearing from my fellow board members is the issue that many of us are having is the fact that it's not fifty-fifty, and I can tell you from experience, because I've had this issue in my own home, a fence is only four, six feet high, but trees can go to ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen feet high. I think you should go back and look at the plan and revise it to do a fifty-fifty.
Well, after you're done, let me just add a little piece.
And, and I think you should just look at it, because it, the ordinance in town says that when you have a fence facing the street, it needs to be, you know, half and half.
Sorry, go ahead, please.
So, in essence, the the, there is, the ordinance, the purpose of the ordinance is to avoid having these, you know, barricade-looking fences, and I know that's not what you're doing, and it's a very limited space, and you're trying to ensure your family's enjoyment, let's not use the word privacy, let's just say your family's enjoyment of that backyard, in particular because you're on a corner lot.
Yeah.
Which makes it somewhat different for your experience, for your family's use of that area than it would be for somebody who was not on a corner lot, 'cause people can drive on both sides. So, normally, the fifty-fifty idea is to prevent that kind of barricade look. What sometimes is done is a combination of the fence with some shrubbery or landscaping so that you achieve both. You get the hard, because, look, the difference between a fence and a tree is that the fence, once you put the fence up, the fence is up, and then it's, it's up, it's providing the privacy as soon as you put the fence up. The problem with, with trees or shrubbery is that you have to wait for them to grow, there's a, you know, there's a cost, there's maintenance.
Yeah.
Right, and so, but in this set of circumstances, you know, where you could get the rear yard setback, where you could get the height of the fence, the only thing being the fifty-fifty exposure, that you can still achieve the same privacy by filling in those sightlines with some shrubbery, and that's kind of where the board is suggesting you consider.
Can you, I don't, go ahead.
Yeah.
So I don't completely agree with the board's assessment, I'm sorry, I really apologize here, but if you stand there, like, there's this road
Sir, I'm not, I'm not, the point of it is not to, I'm sharing with you
Because if you see the road, I can't put shrub on the driveway, sir.
Sir, let me, let me, let's do this, I'm sharing with you an idea
Okay, sure.
For you to consider in terms of achieving your goal.
Yeah.
And, you know, if you were to tell the board, if you were, to tell the board that you would not do the fifty-fifty, and, but ask for everything else, and not do the fifty-fifty, and you're free at your leisure to fill it in with whatever landscaping you like, you don't have to, I know, Member Khan had indicated that you would come back, but there's really no need for you to come back if you agree to that.
I see.
Rather than have to come back, I mean, I know you enjoy coming here, but if we can avoid you coming back, that's one way it can be potentially resolved.
Yeah.
Friendly advice.
Yeah, and thank you so much for that, and I really appreciate it. Given that is the scenario, yeah, we would consider fifty-fifty, and as you might have seen, we, on the, on the road where it is there, where we thought probably fifty-fifty fence and trees would suffice, we actually did that, and we tried that to even extend it, but then in that specific where we thought three panels would help, that's where we were requesting to, you know, that's where we did not extended the trees and the fifty-fifty panel, and we was waiting that if we might go in front of the board, maybe we can, you know, resolve this, but given that scenario, if that is not something that board agrees to, then probably we would go ahead and not go with the panel, and at least patio gets approved, and we, we at least, because with that space right now
You don't have to, you don't have to, you have to explain yourself, so
Yeah.
Would it be fair to say that among the variances you're requesting, that you're asking for all of them still, with the exception that you are removing the request for a solid fence, and instead you're gonna do the fifty-fifty fence in that area?
So we would
Fifty-fifty, six feet?
Yes.
Fifty, everything else you're asking for, the height?
We didn't talk about the rear yard setback yet.
No, what I'm saying, all I'm saying is, right now, you're agreeing to, you're suggesting that you are, you would be amenable to doing the fifty-fifty and removing that part of your request for tonight.
Yeah, given board
Right, but you're still asking for everything else? For the height and the rear yard setback?
Okay, like, I'm sorry, my ignorance, like, my knowledge is definitely not up to the mark.
You're doing fine, Ms. Chowdhury. You're doing fine, all right, let's, let's just stay there, okay? So, we have to talk about the rear yard setback and how we got there, and what happened with that, so if you wanna try to fill us in on the rear yard setback?
Rear yard setback, yes. So, so with the rear yard setback again, because, I mean, there was already a patio there, but it was not usable, it was like pebbles, where kids were easy
Just so that we don't get implicated, it's not a patio, it's like all the pebbles, just
Yeah, it was, it was pebbles there.
If you don't understand saying it patio, we don't like have good knowledge about these things, sir.
Okay, you're, you're okay, just, you're explaining the current conditions, it's okay, go ahead, continue.
It's a little bit unfair here, I don't know, like, sorry, go ahead, please.
Yeah.
So, so yeah, I would prefer doing all the talking today. So, if you would notice, the house is a little tilted, and if you want to build a patio which follows like the height, the house like a rectangular kinda thing, it automatically falls, because of the corner lot, it automatically falls in the variance thing. If you would not want to fall in the variance, that patio would be a triangle, like, it would cut right there, and where you see the stairs, it would cut till there. So, that is, and obviously, we also did not know that, being not from the builder knowledge, we obviously did not know also, that just with this section, we would fall into the variance category. So, yeah, that is the reason, and that section is also uneven, which is very, like, from some of the pictures you would see, it's, it's very uneven, so it becomes really important to level it out for the kids. So hence, we are here for the patio variance.
So to summarize in that, due to the position of the house on the land, and the current setbacks, and where the house is, you are further violating the rear yard, but that's the only way you could do the work you requested, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And part of it, I think, is due to
And the topographical
As you state, right, the pre-existing condition of the house being annual like this as opposed
Yeah, so if it would have been like this straight, we wouldn't even
Understood.
Need variance, but we did not know.
We're good there? We're good.
Okay.
So if I understand, it's, and that's why you started building it, because it was the height of the patio, like, if you had built it lower down, you wouldn't need the variance, is that correct?
No, 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 no.
You would need it either way, if it was just on level? It's because of the height, right? So, it's not on grade, but you're granted, I don't know if you know the answer to the question, but I think it's sort of relevant to me, is, you're allowed, I believe, like, if you build decking, a certain amount of height, so I'm curious, if you know that height and how much over that height this structure is.
They don't need, they don't need the variance for the, for the height?
No, not the height, but I believe it's the height that's triggering
Yeah, that's why they're here.
Right, but I'm wondering how high up they went above what caused the variance to be triggered?
It's not just the height, it's also the depth, because now you went out more than the, whatever you're allowed, the ten feet, that would be allowed at that height.
Right, so once, once you Once you go above the grade, it triggers the, it triggers the variance.
Correct, doesn't matter.
Even an inch above the grade.
Yeah, I think, I think they give Mike a, I think they give Mike a foot or something.
Okay, that's what I was
Okay. All right, I think we beat that to a pulp.
Yep.
So, we're on the same page that the rear, you explained the rear yard setback, the fence will be fifty percent open but six foot high?
Okay.
And the retaining wall.
And the side yard fence is, that's a six-foot, so it's still okay?
The retaining wall.
Yeah, one, all right, okay, does anyone in the public have any questions for this witness? Okay, does anybody in the board wanna make a statement? Okay, does anyone wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Please.
Motion to approve, so, we're gonna take this in pieces, so approved for the rear yard setback, twenty-eight foot variance as requested for the patio, approved for the six-foot height fence, subject to that fence being an open fence and not a privacy fence, and motion to approve on the, Joe, help me, on the retaining wall.
It's written differently here, that's why I'm asking. Okay, so it would be for
Where the front yard fence, where it's six foot
Open?
Fifty percent open, six
Right, it would be, there's no variance for the, for it being closed.
Correct.
It's, it's
The variance would be a six-foot open fence.
Right. There's a, there's a front yard fence variance and a side yard fence variance, where five foot is allowed and six foot is proposed for a one-foot variance.
So the variance would be, all fences are six feet?
Yeah, and fifty-fifty, and patio
Fifty-fifty, and the patio as defined here
Yeah, as in the pictures, it will stay as is.
Correct.
Okay.
So the only change to what you've requested is that the fence is open as opposed to a closed fence.
As per ordinance.
That, per audience, that's my motion to approve.
I think Mr. Jain has a question.
Can I ask an understanding question, not changing anything?
No, you can't. Sorry, so I, no, no, there's a motion. No, that's totally up to them.
Totally up to them. If you wanna make plantings, that's your decision, I'm not making that a requirement of the motion.
Sorry?
If you wanna put up bushes or whatever around it, that's your decision, that's not, we're not making that a requirement of the motion.
Okay.
What?
To plantings in that, in that section?
It's not required if it's open.
Right, wait, wait, okay, so, here's, let's amend the motion, 'cause I think that we, that the board was showing in favor of the idea that landscaping would be used in lieu of a closed fence.
So Let's see, if it is, if it is a variance, then we should find out.
Let's just confirm to make sure, this way you can do everything correctly.
And do it once.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, given I knew it would have gone this far, I wouldn't have started.
One second, no worries.
I just have a question while they're looking that up.
Wait, wait, no, 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 no questions, no questions, we gotta, we gotta, we gotta, we gotta wait here. The motion may be out of order. You're out of order. The system's out of order.
Thank you, Jack Nelson.
Sixty-nine-six.
I declare my approval.
It's a weird
Because it's done differently on here, look. Okay, okay. Here, come up this, just go by this. Four feet, fifty percent of the way, they want six feet in privacy, so the variance is two foot in privacy.
If it's one seventy, ninety-one, and then just B?
I have a routine I had cases with that for years. Let's restart. Right, so it's two yard, two yard variance on the front.
Oh, here you go. One seventy-nine-one B six?
Yeah.
B six, yeah. Be screened from public view by evergreen plantings that shall have a height of planting equal to, not less than, fifty percent of the height of the fence. Evergreen plantings are required in front of the fence.
Okay.
Hi, so Okay, wait, 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 and I'll talk at one time, all right. So the motion will have to be subject to Mr. Horn agreeing, to amend the motion to state that landscaping can be placed along that fence in, in relief under one seventy, one, one seven zero dash ninety-one B six A. Okay, that's gonna mean something to us, trust us on that.
So, let's just put it in layman's terms first, let's, I'm gonna withdraw the motion to re-put it back in so it's cleaner, is that okay?
You can do that.
We'll withdraw the motion. New motion to approve. Motion to approve the rear yard setback of a proposal of forty-seven, so it's a twenty-eight foot variance approved for the rear yard setback. On the front yard fence, approved variance to allow the six-foot open fence, so it a two-foot variance, so you can do the six-foot fence on the front side. On the side, you're asking for a one-foot variance, because you're allowed a five-foot fence, and you're asking for a six-foot fence. So we're granting both height variances, both for your front and side yard fence, open fence, 50/50 open, with the required per code landscaping that is required per the code. Is that okay, Jackie?
But then there is no space.
Ma'am, there's no, there's no, there's no discussion.
Okay.
There's no discussion.
Per the rules, that's what we are proposing.
Right. This is not, this is not a, this is, let me be clear, this is not a discussion, you've put an application in before the board.
Okay.
The board has the option to do one of three things, and I know, you know, I wouldn't have to tell this to Mr. Passata, he is here all the time, but for, for, let me put it this way, the board has basically three options, they can approve your application in total, they can also deny your application in total, or they can do a modification of the application. We're going down lane number three with a modification, where some, with Mr. Horn's motion is, is that 80% of what you're asking for is being offered to be granted with the one piece, uh, being added in there with regard to the 50%. So that's what's going on before the board, so there's no further discussion, but I'm just letting you know that's what's being put on before the board, okay? So there's a motion, and?
I just want to clarify the motion, Todd's motion, on the last
No, no, my motion.
Yeah, doesn't matter, everybody knows who you are.
They get confused all the time.
All right. The, but the, the one that's over five feet, the motion is that that is also going to be 50/50, correct?
Yeah, there's no, nobody, there is no, there is no variance for a solid private
All fence is 50/50.
The only height variance is on the fence, not only height.
Right, just want to make that clear, right.
Yep, yep.
I'll second it.
But wait, I, no, so I want to be clear, though, I don't think they need a variance, that's what I'm confused, because they don't need a variance for the five-foot
They want to sit, they're asking for six.
But they're asking for six, so do we have to say, we're going to give you the six
That's what I said.
With the petition that it be 50/50, is that what you said?
That's what I said.
Okay, got it.
Yes.
Can I ask?
Wait, do we have a second?
If I'll second it.
No, 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 no.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Horn.
Yes.
Mr. Kenia, yes, Mr. Sherman.
Yes.
Miss Yon.
Yes.
Miss Weisman.
Yes.
Miss Khan.
Yes, but I do want to say one thing before I make my, this is now going to be in writing, right, you can get, you'll find out exactly what you need to do, and you'll follow the letter, and you'll do the right thing, and then after this is all done, somebody will come by and make sure that the fence is put up with all the plantings and whatnot, so, you know, you, just so you know, someone will come by and make sure from the town. Okay, all right, I vote yes.
Mr. Beer.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you, I have two questions if I may ask.
Why don't we call the next one, I'll, I'll, I'll try
Okay, Block 4001, Lot 15 dot 01, 25 Harvest Lane, application number 2025 dash 63 dash V, Tarun Sony, application, applicant seeks approval to finish framed space to habitable living space in violation of the following section, 170 dash 87 BB four, habitable floor area, 3220 square feet allowed, 3835 square feet proposed, 615 square feet variance requested, 17087 CC four, habitable floor area ratio, 30% allowed, 36.19% proposed, 6.19% variance requested.
Come on in. Good evening, it's almost good morning, but good evening.
All right. 25 Harvest, right?
We know where we're going on this one.
Good evening, members of the board, my name's Yale Klett, Law Office of Yale Klett, 354 Eisenhower Parkway here in Livingston, I represent the applicant, Tarun and Adita Sony, this is 25 Harvest Lane, it's a carbon copy of an earlier variance application that we heard, I think at the last hearing, um, it seeks to finish already framed habitable floor area, um, in excess of, uh, the allowed, uh, area and area ratio, so we're looking at two D4 variances, uh, I have with me to provide testimony, Mr. Cedra for architecture and Mr. McLean for planning. Mr. Cedra was testifying earlier, um
All right, why don't we get Ms., get Ms. Cedra sworn in, Ms. Cedra, do you swear and tell truth for the zoning board tonight?
I do.
Okay, Ms. Cedra's been previously qualified as an architect and would continue to testify as an architect.
Correct.
And we can accept him as an expert.
Great.
On this application.
On this application, thank you.
All right, and I'll, I'll swear in and qualify Mr. McLean when, when he's ready for questions, right? All right, Mr. Cedra, would you mind walking us through the architectural qualities of this application?
Uh, sure, uh, so we are proposing to finish this, uh, space at the back of the building, it's located at the second floor, it's unfinished space and it's not accessible, um, it has, uh, electrical wires hanging, and it has some ductwork, it's unfinished, as I said, um, it was built with the original structure, so we are proposing to finish this space and add it to the house, uh, by relocating the master bedroom to this space and reconfiguring the, the old master bedroom to host, uh, the home office and the enlarged walk-in closet. Also, uh, the area where we entering this space, uh, used to be the old bathroom, the whole bathroom, so we're gonna relocate the old bathroom, uh, to the left of this new hallway to access, uh, this space, and on the right, uh, we will have an extra bedroom with its own bathroom and closet. So we, we are proposing to finish the space, we're not proposing any structural modification to this, uh, um, existing space, uh, we only proposing, uh, new windows, uh, for the master bedroom and also the, the small bedroom, um, just for, for more light and more egress access, and also we're proposing windows on the side of the building as well. So the, our proposal does not involve any structural changes, we're just gonna have to, you know, add windows and, uh, and that's pretty much it, and also we'll finish the spaces as well.
Will the exterior aesthetics, um, style and materials be consistent?
Correct, yeah, nothing is gonna happen to the exterior except adding the windows.
I have no further questions for the witness.
Oh, excuse me, does anyone on the board have any questions for this witness? Does anyone in the public have any questions for this witness? Okay, back to you.
Okay, uh, Mr. McLean, would you please state your name, credentials?
We'll get, we'll get him sworn in.
Okay.
Swear and tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
I do.
Okay, can you please state and spell your name for the record?
Yes, Alexander McLean, uh, last name, uh, is M C C L E A N.
Okay, and, uh, why don't we get Mr. McLean's qualifications on briefly?
Okay, sure, yeah, I hold a master's in city regional planning from Rutgers University, I've been a practicing planner for over 10 years, um, I'm a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, licensed by the State Board, professional planners, and I've testified before boards throughout the state.
Does anyone on the board have any questions or concerns regarding this witness? There be no objections, we can certify you as an expert in professional planning.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Mr. McLean, go ahead and describe the planning qualities of the application.
Sure. First, I want to just, I guess for context, I just, I prepared some exhibits just so that the, uh, the board has an idea of, um, yeah, the space.
That's gonna be A1? Well, we'll call this A1, now, give me one second, Mr. McLean. This is why you never let attorneys do this.
You guys can't, hey.
Don't, yeah, 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 certainly don't let architects do it either, but, you know, okay, so A1 is, uh, we'll, we'll say, uh, Mr. McLean, you are going to agree with me, it's eight pages?
Yes.
Okay, and, uh, this, we'll just call this all, uh, exhibit A1.
Okay. So I'll just quickly provide the context here, we'll just fly through this, um, I just thought it was really important, um, to just make sure that we're all clear about what, you know, the need for this, um, relief, all right, so we are talking about, uh, Lot 15 point 01, it's the highlighted area in the aerial map, an aerial image provided, as you can see, it's surrounded by, um, it's, well, it's, it's next to the, the property that was heard last month, uh, it's this 23 Harvest Lane, uh, on Lot 15, so we're, the applicant's property is on Lot 15 point 01, and the, and the, oh, and that's next to the, the name, the prior applicant's property on Lot 15 point 02, uh, it's, so it's the applicant's property surrounded by single-family homes. Property measures, uh, point 243 acres, um, which is roughly, approximately 10,597 square feet, um, and it's, it's almost constructed, uh, last year, um, and it just follows the, subdivision, uh, that was approved by the planning board on, on March 2023. As the architect indicated, that we're looking to just expand the livable area on the, within the home, uh, so that there's no structural changes to the exterior of the, of the home. Yes, we are looking, we are, it's probably located in the R4 district, and we are looking for relief, uh, under section, uh, 170 dash 87 BB four for, uh, floor area, where 3,220 square feet is, um, is the maximum, and we are proposing 8, 3,835 square feet, so it's a difference of, um, 615 feet above what is required, and that's within what was stipulated in the planning board's resolution, uh, for what would be, uh, an acceptable variance deviation. We also are looking for relief under section 170 dash 87 point, uh, CC four for limited FAR as the attorney had mentioned, so it's a, uh, it's a deviation of just, uh, points, um, 6.19% above what's permitted, which is the, uh, point 3%, a point 3 FAR. With respect to the positive criteria, uh, D4 variances, uh, require the demonstration of special reasons and special cases, um, so just, to be, to be frank, I mean, I think this is pretty clear, um, so if you're looking at, through the exhibits here, so I just provide, so, I should probably walk this earlier, uh, so you have the, I showed you the exterior of the home on page exhibit two and, and exhibit three, so the focus here is the, uh, is the rear of the home, so you can see on exhibit three, it's that, that one window in the back, and then there's no window on the other side of the, of the, on the, on the north side of the home, in the rear of the home. Exhibit four, uh, this is associated, these are the truncated, uh, livable space, so that's the, it's one of the bedrooms here, and, uh, the laundry room. Exhibit five, uh, you can see the, the bathroom, uh, the, the rear of the bathroom, the shower is, uh, where, is another, is another truncated room, as you can see in the, in the, in the image to the right, on the right side of exhibit five, that's the, that's the access to the rear of the, of the home. So you can see one of the bedrooms to the right, I think that's one of their children's bedrooms on the right, and the bathroom is right behind the, uh, the stairs, so that's the end of the, of their home, that's the, that's their, virtually the back of their current home, it's, uh, um, and then as you, for exhibit six, um, I had went into the, applicant's home, we went to through the crawl spaces, that the crawl space is the only means of getting to the rear of the home, and you can see all the HVAC work that's, gets in the way of that, um, exhibit seven is the, uh, some of the, is the means of us getting to the, to the rear of the home, so this, that, that where the ladder is located, that is the back of the, uh, bathroom, and then to the right is, uh, is the back of their, one of the bedrooms of the, the children, uh, and you can see all the, uh, the lack of insulation in the bag, it's obviously gets, as the architect mentioned, it's not finished, so. And then you have, uh, just some additional photos here of the, of the rear of the home, so that's all the, uh, dead space here, so, you know, this is obviously, um, very, you know, it's a very strange situation, and, um, so that's, I think that's obviously a special reason, and this is a very particular case that we're dealing with here, this is a home that the, the applicant purchased, um, uh, virtually unaware of the condition of, of this, this space, um, and it's, um, it's clear that, uh, you know, this satisfies the, the special reasons, um, with respect to the, uh, negative criteria, um, I believe that the applicant's proposal to, um, finish the rest of the space, all the internal work, um, it advances multiple purposes of the municipal land use law, purpose A for improving the quality of the township's housing stock, within this particular home, obviously, obviously that, I don't think the town would want a home in their community that, that had, that is in this condition, uh, purpose B for, uh, safety, you want to finish, uh, you see a lot of, uh, unfinished walls, lack of insulation, that's obviously an issue, um, purpose C for providing adequate light, uh, we are looking to, uh, provide additional windows in livable space there, um, purpose G, uh, providing sufficient space in appropriate locations, so we are talking about, we're not, we're not adding any more units, it's, everything's staying the same with respect, with respect to that, and purpose I for promotion of a desirable visual environment, uh, since we are proposed, the proposed project would, uh, take place internally, um, there's no external, um, and so it's, this is in the rear of the home, so there's no impact to the streetscape, and so, so for these reasons, I believe that, um, this would not result in a substantial detriment to the public good or, uh, an impairment to the zoning plan and zoning ordinance, and meets the, uh, criteria for relief under the municipal land use law for D4 relief.
I think I heard you say this in other words, but
Yeah.
With respect to the positive criteria, you, you made examples of how this illustrates, um, efficient use of unfinished space. It advances the purpose of zoning for adequate light, air, and appropriate population density and safety.
Correct.
Okay, I, I think that was pretty thorough, I, I don't have any further questions.
Does anybody on the board have any questions for this witness?
I, I got a question, so were you, how are you gonna knock, how are you gonna build behind the bathroom on this?
Oh, I mean, I
Say again?
Sorry, maybe, did, did you answer that before?
Are you, um, oh, yeah, that
Is that question for Mr. Cedra?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the area is behind the bathroom, right, and the bedroom, so how are you, what, which, are you gonna be knocking some walls down, or?
We're gonna remove actually the existing bathroom.
Are you gonna remove that?
The existing bathroom is gonna get demolished, because that's gonna become the hallway to enter the space.
The bathroom on the picture, the page five?
Yeah, it's the same, it's the bathroom on the right, the picture of the, on the right, I mean, on the left, is the same one in the middle of the, of the one on the right, that's, that's the bathroom, behind the, the ladder to the
Behind the attic access, behind the attic access.
Uh, this bathroom is located between the master on the left, and there is a bedroom on the right.
So you've got the whole thing, it's got it out, and the, you make a, okay.
Yeah, this, this bathroom where you have the double vanity, that's the one that's gonna become the hallway now.
And you testified to the fact that this was kind of an unknown condition to the buyer, the applicant at this time, that he didn't know this was there, and you, he found out later on.
Correct, yeah.
So basically the builder lied and cheated.
That's, that's, yeah, that's my understanding.
Yeah, I wouldn't say, I wouldn't say that, but
Okay, but
Some, there was, there was, there was some extra lumber at the end of the day.
Yeah, well
Right, yes.
That's relevant with respect to this slippery slope concern. That's relevant with respect to this slippery slope concern, you're not, I don't believe, going to breed a population of homeowners to try and take advantage of additional floor area, this, this application addressed two specific instances.
Yep.
Anybody else have a question?
I have a comment, I don't really even know what to say, so this is the second time that we're seeing this exact application, and while I really appreciate you going through the negative criteria and the positive criteria, like, to me, I don't think there's anything positive or anything, I think that we have to look at this in a total vacuum, I think the neighbors don't really care that the inside of the house is finished or not, because it's not really changing the aesthetic of the house, so I think basically what we're doing is we're fixing a mess, right, and that's all that we're doing, and I hope that we never, ever see an application like this ever again in front of the zoning board, because this is embarrassing, so I think it's, it, it warrants a different type of, we have to look at it differently, I don't think that we can really look at it the same as we would look at a normal, you know, D variance, so, with that being said, I think we have to just think about this a little bit, and we're sort of over a barrel, aren't we? Yeah.
If, if it allays concerns about addressing the wrong, I'm dealing with a very motivated applicant, that's going to be addressing these things outside this forum, I made sure it was outside this forum, to address the injustices.
Does anybody else have any comments or questions?
I assume we're good with the public? Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I should reiterate, like, my comments from twenty-three, this, this section of town, it does seem very unique, not typical with the rest of R four, because the road curves around and it's overlooking C V S, so it, it does seem a very, these, both these lots, but we're just dealing with this lot, but the curve is where it's this lot, these do seem very unique to me versus any other houses in town, because you see them from, from this C V, you know, the C V S slash bottle king location, so, and I, I go there every day, and I think the, the houses are, you know, aesthetically pleasing and, and do not look, and you get the benefit of hindsight here, don't look inappropriate, even though I agree generally, this does seem like, these, these properties do seem in a very unique location, the way it's a dead end at the end of the road, almost bringing it into sort of a, it is in commercial sightlines, in a commercial area, so, I just wanted to reiterate what I said with respect to the prior application.
Thank you for that, because it, it all needs to be readdressed, even though we want to go home. And I think the words you, I know, the words you used before, I think, was like, it was his own mini-zone, it behaves like its own zone, that section of street, thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Anyone want to make a motion?
I will make a motion to, yeah, so, yeah, all the comments that were made at the board, I fully agree with, it is what it is, I will make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Yes.
Mr. Horn, sorry.
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Kenia, yes. Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Weisman?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Khan. Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you all. Motion to adjourn?
Approved.
Second, third, fourth, and fifth. I gave, I gave you guys a, a time limit, and all of a sudden you followed it.